Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, April 29th. We acknowledge, appreciate that the land on which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. Called order, and just under called order, I was given this note today. We are proud to recognize that next week, May 5th to May 11th, 2025, is Canadian Mental Health Association National Mental Health Week. National Mental Health Week is a public awareness campaign, campaign, held across Canada to educate people on the benefits of good mental health and to support recovery for mental illness. This year's theme is unmasking mental health, encouraging us to look beyond the surface, embrace honesty and vulnerability, and strengthen our connection, connections with others. Mental health is essential to living a full and meaningful life by having hope, open and honest conversations. We help break down barriers, challenge stigma, and support one and another in building a healthier community. So on behalf of myself, city council, staff, all the residents of Charlestown, I encourage all Charlestown residents to join us in promoting mental health awareness today and every day. And our City Hall Bell Tower will be illuminated in green during May 5th, 6th, and 7th in support of this awareness campaign. Any declarations of conflict of interest?
I have one there, Mayor Brown.
Counsel Duran.
In the closed session, E, 5E, land acquisition.
Okay, duly noted. Counsel McKinnon, can you just put your mic on?
No, I don't have a conflict. I would agree.
You have a conflict?
No.
Okay. Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, under grants, if there's conversation on one of the grants, I would be stepping out of the room for that.
On one of the grants?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. So approval of the agenda. We have 4A, B, and then 5 to move into a closed session. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. We had asked for just one item to be on this agenda for the go over the grants, so I'm asking if we can do 4B before 4A to give fairness for us to speak to the grants and have time to go over them all, so we're not rushed at the end because we have a meeting following.
Yeah, so you're moving that?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Counsel Twill. Okay, so 4B will become 4A. All in favor? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
Sure.
Okay, good. So start with 4B. And I'm going to return to the CAO, Sue Fraser, and she will start it off.
Thank you, your worship. The external grants has been a topic of conversation since we started the budget process and looped around on two sequential dates that got us over the line with respect to an approved budget for the current fiscal. And there was interest, as everyone knows, to have a more fulsome conversation about the external grants in light of the fact that we are in certainly different times with respect to delivering core services and having enough resources to do that on a go forward. So I think that's probably the main reason, without speaking for others, that people felt we needed to put more of a spotlight on the grants that we do provide, and for the most part have provided for a very long time. And I think maybe one of the issues that caused this to be, other than the fact that we have, we're in difficult times with our own resources and doing our own core service delivery, it was the amount of money when it was all added up, when it was all tabulated at the end of the day, it seemed like a significant amount of money that maybe not everyone fully appreciated because it was divided up amongst all the different departments and different sections of the budget. So now that we're looking at it, it's been, it's been put together very effectively by our CFO with support of our executive staff, so that you've got a six-page document in front of you now. And those grants are in buckets in that there's money that you should appreciate is money that's in and out. So it's net zero on the fiscal impacts on our budget at the end of the day. So those are in a separate bucket from the ones that, for instance, might be a community grant, which has been an annual allocation to not-for-profit organizations that we've supported. So our CFO has it all broken out into the different categories. I think the important piece going forward is that department heads are given an opportunity to give a high-level overview of the ones that they have, we have traditionally found in their sections of the budget, so that everyone has a full understanding of what it is we've been supporting over the years and the little bit of history behind that. And that might help remove some of the concern over what we have been doing traditionally and what's in the current fiscal. The only other thing I want to add before we pass it on to the department heads is that I think it's important to appreciate that we can't turn this ship on a dime. If there's, if there's significant interest in changing what organizations we're supporting and how we support them, then I think we need to give people due notice. I don't think we can just start pulling the rug out from underneath different groups that have come to expect these funds on an ongoing basis. If we're going to do something different going forward, I think we need to have time to, to work on that in our, in our own groups with the different departments and figure out what the path forward is, so that we've got that path set out for when we go into the next budget year, so we're not, the next budget exercise, so we're not reacting to this all over again next time we do budget. So the intent would be going forward after tonight, that there's direction to staff, that we, if there's any reconfiguration that needs to happen, we come back to you with what that plan should look like, so it's done well in advance of planning out our next budget. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Counsel Twill?
Yep. As most of you are aware, members of city council and senior staff, I've sent at least two or three emails requesting a philosophical analysis as to what the true mandate is for city council in terms of tax dollars that we're able to provide our core service delivery. It's operational. And then if you look at the capital projects, what we're able to provide our residents in terms of new infrastructure or infrastructure renewal. And that could be anything from replacing water and sewer infrastructure, sidewalks, it could be sporting venues and facilities, as well as other, other demands on the city's corporation, keeping in mind that we're a full-service community. Now, I have asked for that, that synopsis, so that before we get into line items, we clearly understand what our responsibility truly is. So when the taxpayers are asking, okay, where's, where's my tax dollars going? Do I see it being spent in my neighborhood or my community? What's being enhanced? What's being upgraded? We've asked, it could be a street to be paved, it could be sidewalks that need to be installed, it could be a number of different requests. And, well, you know, I put in for it, but it's not going to happen this year, and really it's not on the list for the next four or five years. Yet at the same time, we have a list of grants, tax incentives, you know, approximately $7 million or more. I've asked for that. That's what I talked about several weeks ago when Counsel Bernard was the acting chair of finance. I made that request because I was trying to be proactive. It wasn't, with all due respect, it wasn't reacting, it was trying to be proactive. So council, myself, we could have a better insight as to, okay, what are the parameters? What are the parameters? Are the parameters narrow? Are they wide? Are they extremely wide? Does everything go? I honestly don't know. As I said at our last meeting, I want to be able to make an informed decision. So when residents ask, what did you base your decision on? I'd be able to give a concrete answer as to, okay, here's our mandate, here's the criteria for these grants, and how do they interact or they don't interact? Do they complement one another? They don't complement one another? We're asked, as far as committees, departments, to cut back. Yet at the same time, some of these grants and incentives seem to increase. It's not status quo for them, with all due respect, but, but for us, it's no, we've got to cut back, or we can't introduce a new initiative because we simply don't have the money. But we do have the money. So I've asked for that. I've asked for that, Mr. Jenkins. I've sent that to you, senior management team, I've sent that at least two or three times. And you know what? It's not here in front of me. And I got to tell you, I'm really disappointed. I really am. You know, we make these requests, we're trying to get an understanding from a holistic, from a philosophical point of view, philosophical perspective, and it's not here in front of us. And I'm really disappointed with that. So CAO Sue, when raised this issue back several weeks ago, again, when Counsel Bernard was acting chair of finance, that was the request, and we were supposed to have that information back several weeks ago, they said, okay, we'll get on with the rest of the operational budget. I said, fine, we'll go ahead. But this was supposed to come back. This information was supposed to come back besides, besides the line items, okay? That's part of the equation, it's not all of it. So from a fundamental philosophical perspective, that information is not here in front of us.
Counsel Twill?
Yes.
Thank you, it's five minutes. We'd like, we got, we got a long meeting and we had it.
Oh, I know we got a long meeting.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This was supposed to be the only item on the agenda tonight.
Counsel Twill?
This was supposed to be the only agenda.
Anyways, we had the agenda moved. Could I just quickly ask council members, we did pass a strategic plan, did we not? For 2226. There are four pillars: community building and place making, governance and civic engagement, inclusive economic growth, infrastructure, and the environment. Under inclusive government, inclusive economic growth, approach municipal support for cultural, artistic, touristic, sport hosting, event-related activities as investments with accompanying economic and social impacts for the benefit of residents and visitors alike. Collaborate with other levels of government and leverage its partnered organizations: Charlestown Area Development Corporation, Discover Charlestown, Charlestown Inc., Downtown Charlestown Inc., arts and cultural organizations, and the innovation ecosystem to support investment, attraction, and foster inclusive growth. To me, those are the parameters. Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to make a quick comment, your worship, because I did watch the, the last time you had meetings on this, and I had missed the meeting. But I just want to say, so when we were doing the budget, we were, we were working really hard to balance the budget. And it was requested, as Counsel Twill said, it was requested to look at all the grants. And I believe the CAO has said it a number of times. So I kind of, we've always kind of had it broken down in, there's, there's the operational departmental grants, for lack of a better word, and there was the community grants. And so we had money to pass, we'll call it the operational grants, which is the departmental grants, which, you know, for example, the Environment Sustainable Building micro grants, the watershed grants, the heritage grants, economic development tourism grants. They were all looked at in the different departments under the management and cuts have been made to them. So what we felt was, but there was, council wanted a review on it, so we said, that's a great idea, we'll go through it all, there's some new councils here, and there's some, some grants that we've been giving out for years. The community grants is the one that we traditionally, after the budget, we traditionally go through with the community grants, and that's usually where you have people that are coming in here and asking for more money, they may get some money, they're asking for some more, what have you. That's usually what we have our voting on. So when the budget got passed, what we expected to happen was we would have our meetings on the community grants, the new requests. These departmental ones that we, that we're talking about so much, we have quite a bit of time to deal with them. And I think the CAO has said a couple of times, you don't want to, you want to give these other associations time. If council decides that some of these are not what you want to do anymore, like for example, Pat Miel, some of the heritage grants or the heritage tax incentives, if we find that we want to reduce them, then we need to give some of these other partners of the city some time to adjust to that. So that's what we always kind of looked at, is we have the operational grants departmental, and we have the, the community grants. So now, in the community grants, and I think Counsel Yankoff had pointed this out at our last finance meeting, where there's some, what we would consider community grants, someone comes and has money and they're asking for more. Some of them, through finance, were slotted into some of the departmental grants where the money would normally come from. Like I noticed, under community grants, the guild's not there. The guild is under the Arts and Culture, but we never talked about it. So there's a couple in there, and I think that will come out, that, that will have to come out under the community grants, so we can talk about it, make a decision on it. So I, I think this conversation was always going to happen, and, and we never considered it to be a big hurry, because those are approved, the money's in the budget for it. But if council wants to talk about them and review them and make changes for the 2026-27 budget, we have time to do that. What we usually do is the community grants now, so we can get council's opinion and then get them at the door. So anyway, I just didn't notice that was said the last time I was here, but that's really the way when we did the budget, how we had the budget come down, and we had to make sure there was money in there. We've gone through, all the department managers have gone through a lot of these and made the recommended cuts under these departmental, or I'll call operational grants. Now to Counsel Twill's point, if, if, if there's some of these departmental ones that we need to talk about and council wants to make changes, then, then council has a prerogative. And that would be something that would reflect in the 2627 budget. So is that clear?
Yeah.
It's the community ones you want to deal with now, and I'll call it operational grants, departmental grants, whatever, but that's, it's, it's usually two different, two different ones we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you. Counsel McLeary? Counsel McLaure.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just, just in, Counsel Twill, just in relation to your comments and concerns, I, I feel, uh, you know, the, the staff have done, um, finance staff have done and CAO have done a great job of providing us with, uh, pretty good detailed information on the existing grants that, that, you know, that are being allocated. Uh, there's been good, good material information circulated, uh, on, on a lot of the history. Uh, but as it, as it relates to the, um, as it relates to the seven point seven roughly of grant money, uh, for this year, I think, uh, I know I sat down with, uh, the CFO, uh, earlier in advance of this meeting, I'd like to see, you know, let's see him go through the presentation on the, uh, on the global grant piece, and I think there'll be better context as to the, um, as to the, as to the history of, of what we've been doing to this point. And then I think it'll be a good discussion and information for deciding what we wanna do in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget as it relates to these, to these global numbers. So, um, thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, and I'm certainly open to, to having that fresh conversation and going through these, these more line by line. I do appreciate the work that the staff did. It certainly helped me when I was going through and trying to, uh, make sure that there was justification based on our grants policy, that's all in our package. One thing I noticed though is that, um, on the page of the document, the ninety-two thousand dollar discrepancy from what staff recommended to provide to grants and what have committee have recommended to provide to grants. So ninety-two thousand dollars, a lot of money, um, when staff have recommended certain amounts, obviously based on the criteria and the work that they've did that's in our package. So why are we increasing that from a committee level? Like where's the justification for the increase based on that?
That would be the decision-making power of the committee, standing committee.
But did they take that and, and, uh, put that to our grant policy at, at committee level to ensure? Because staff have recommended based on their justifications that are in our package. Why are we giving out ninety-two thousand dollars more at a committee level if it didn't meet the criteria?
For which one?
There's quite a few, actually.
Yeah, but the ninety-two, can you just?
Score PEI, Blooming House, Kiwanis.
Well, that's, that's the grants. That's the, that's the grants you're talking about? What page is that?
Uh, page is. Page two, yeah. And the, the rest is, the rest of the package, staff recommendation, committee recommendation are equal, but there is a ninety-two thousand dollar discrepancy from what staff recommended versus what committee represented or recommended. So I'm just wondering why and was that vetted through the proper, uh, justifications?
And CA, CA Sue Fraser, I believe that's what some of the managers will be going through, correct?
Yes, Your Worship. Um, in the interest of, of trying to get everyone up to the rail to give a quick overview of their particular sections, that might counsel answer your question about the process they, the path they took to get.
Oh, I see there, it's, cause it's all here.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why is there discrepancy between what the staff have recommended?
And the committee.
And why the committees increased that by like thirty thousand.
Okay, just one sec. Counsel retired.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, so I think, you know, I appreciate the history here and I appreciate, you know, the trying to outline the fact that we have operational grants versus community grants. Uh, but I think what, what else is the context that's missing here is, is some of the discussion that we've had on this topic is not necessarily about, you know, who's getting what and so on. It's the fact of how they get this. So there's a, it seems like the longstanding tradition here is it's, it's just been that way. And everybody just gets every year, like, and, uh, to the tune of seven million dollars worth of grants here and whatever it is. The only thing in my time on council here, the only thing that we as a council has approved is the community grant section, which is the, kind of the community one that vets it through a bit of the grant policy process. I'm, I'm yet to hear, does the rest of these follow that same grant policy process at the very least? If not, why not? That's a, that's a fundamental question. Why do, why is it just because they got it for ten years, they don't have to follow a policy, uh, that we have at the city? Secondly, um, you know, as an organization, I sat through two budgets here so far now where we've been asked operationally to cut money on numerous occasions, to cut the operational budgets, which ultimately cuts the services that are provided across the city, but not one time have we been asked to cut these grant money or reach out to our partners and say, you know what? It's gonna be lean this year. And as a result of that, there's gonna be some cuts. And we're gonna, we're gonna accept all of your applications through our grant policy and we will vet that through whatever process we can in order to determine what's best interest of the city and the taxpayers of Charlotte Town and of course, the, uh, the entities that are asking for this. We wanna be a partner. Uh, you know, with all due respect, Mary, you, you read the four pillars of our, um, of our, okay, but to, to what cost? Is that, is that just an open-ended cost? Fundamentally, yes, we need to, we need to adhere to those values that we wanna do, but is it to the tune of seven to nine million dollars? Ten million dollars? Eleven million?
Could be more, could be less.
Could be more. I, I don't think so. I think that's a little bit irresponsible for us not to.
No, no, that's not being irresponsible. I'm just, I just laid out the pillars that we adopted.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody's debating that.
No.
What they're debating here is the fact that it's, we were presented with a seven point seven million dollar budget and said, that's the way it is. That's the way it's always been. Prove that, but let's just focus on the community grants and approve those ones. And to the, to the chair, that's what you tried to have us do last week was just to focus in on the community grants and approve those. But what about the other seven point seven million dollars here? So I, I think this needs to be, I've got two minutes and twenty seconds.
No, I'm not, I'm just, we're, we're listening to you.
Yeah, well, I feel like I'm being told to hurry up here, so.
No, I just, no, that wasn't made.
The point is, is that, the point is, is I think that context is missing. It's not about who shouldn't get something or what they shouldn't get, it's about the process and that's what, and that's where my thing is. So I hope to hear that here this evening more so than, well, we just always gave this and we always gave that and this is what we did and historically that's the way we do things. Thank you.
Okay, we're just gonna wrap it up with the last couple more comments and then CA Sue, you wanna?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna provide a clarification. I don't wanna give the public the impression that we don't have process here, that, that we have a, a spreadsheet that just gets a free pass every year. All of these grants come through departments. Every single one of them come through departments and get vetted through a standing committee just like everything else does before it comes into the council chambers. This particular exercise comes to the council as a budget draft that is, this forms part of the overall budget document that everyone gets as it's vetted through the respective standing committee that comes through finance. So it's going from the standing committee to the finance committee to the council floor. There's a process. We have taken this, this information that you have tonight and have flowed it through those particular channels every single year. So we're not doing anything unusual here, but what we are doing, which what I said in my introductory remarks, is we're taking a second sober look at all of our external funding, just simply because we're in a place and time where we feel like we need to do that. There's nothing bad, good, or ugly about it. Um, it's not staff being unresponsive to the council's concerns about external funding. It's us all sitting together now tonight to talk about what our path forward is with respect to grants.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, uh, thank you, CAO. And, and basically that was, I was, what I said earlier about, these have all gone through the departments. Some cuts have been made. They've all gone through the proper departments. That's why I said we have time to deal with these, cause the money's been approved in the budget for these, but if, if council wants to review it and make changes for twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's fine. What we haven't reviewed is, is the community grants. But it's, it's not like we're saying, ah, you know, we, we, we give that money every year, so just go and give it. No, it goes through the, it goes through, like she said, it goes through the standing committees every year. So it's processed properly. Um, on the question that, that Counselor McCabe had, I can tell you that, uh, and the information never got changed, but if you're looking at the Royalty Center, the House of Sport, they were recommending twenty-five thousand, they weren't aware that, that grant is actually a sports subsidy. And so that came through about ten years ago. Um, we give sports subsidy to soccer and hockey and baseball and all those particular ones, and then out of the House of Sport was gymnastics, PI boxing, taekwondo, there's a number of sports out of there. So this grant goes to those sports subsidies, not, not all the different offices in all the buildings. Dan did, Dan had checked on that and then realized, uh, yes, that is, is a fact, it's the sport organizations that get the grant. And whether they use that grant on their part of the lease, on their square footage, whatever, that's maybe what they use it for, but, but as far as the city of Charlotte Town, that's part of the sports subsidy.
Counsel Twill.
Anyway.
Let's wrap it up and then we can get to the managers and directors.
I just wanna give you an example. Uh, we were handed a sheet when we were, um, doing the capital projects. This sheet was dated March twenty-fourth, budget update for council. And one of the line items was the street patching materials, twenty-five percent reduction amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now.
That, that's capital.
That's capital. Yeah, it's capital. I know, I know it's capital.
That was a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar.
But in my, in my email that I sent out, right? It's not only operational, I talked about capital as well, infrastructure renewal and, and even, even, street patching is really operational because you're not, you're not pulverizing the street, you're just, or we need, we, there was a, a request for another patching crew because of the state of, of the streets here in the city. It's no secret that our, that our streets are, you know, a, a lot of them are pretty deplorable shape. It's nobody's fault, our crews are doing a good job, but it's just, it's the amount of traffic that are on our streets, it's the type of weather that we have, the, you know, the, the thaw and, and the, uh.
But I think our, our capital budget in the street repaving is higher than the last number of years.
I understand.
Just finished up, Counsel Twill, come on, let's, we wanna get the presentation here so we can go at these. That's a capital project and we increased paving from three point four million to five point two.
Five, five point one.
I'm talking about street patching.
I know.
That, that was a request, right? For a hun, for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, right? Um, and that, that could deploy another, another patching crew that could go out there and do the work, uh, that's required for say, uh, you know, water and sewer and the work that they do and interacting back and forth with public works. So I was just trying to give an example of where this was cut from the budget. So, um, just going through the information.
Yeah. If I could, if I could respond to that, Your Worship, very quickly.
Just quickly respond because these guys are waiting, we got staff here waiting to make presentations.
It was, the capital budget for paving was increased more than it's been the last number of years. And the decrease that you're talking about was, was the patching and operational and it was five hundred and something. And the mayor, the, the mayor, the manager felt that a hundred and seventy-five could come out of that because we had increased the overall road paving capital budget. So it went from like four point four to five point one.
Okay.
So there was, so that's why, that there was room there to be able to do that. Now it's come from the manager.
Okay. Sue?
Thank you.
Do you wanna be the maestro here? Who do, who do we go with first? Go with, Mr. Jenkins?
Your Worship, we have a sequential order, probably easiest to follow. Everyone has a hard copy of this, so why don't we get people on the rail in the order of the list?
Mr. Jenkins, you can take over, please.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Um, and through to Counselor Twill, um, I apologize, uh, if, if you have the sense that we're, we're not trying to answer your questions because we, we really are, there's, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of history in terms of how a lot of these grants got formulated, uh, but we are trying to provide all the information to give you the, give you the context and understand how these fit into our core priorities and, and our strategic plan and, and who makes the decisions and how makes, they make the decisions. Hopefully at the end of tonight, you'll have a better understanding of that.
Well, I've been all talking.
I, I do. It's, unfortunately though, it's, it's not something that you, we can just put in a tidy, uh, one page to say this, this is the answer. It is, it is a, um, a, a bit of a, you know, there's, there's a lot to it. So, um, in any event, um, just in terms of responding to your questions, um, there, there is significant consistency across the, the country with respect to what are our core responsibilities of the three level, levels of government, municipal, provincial, and federal. Um, we, I passed around and it's in your package as well on the next, on the next page, it's a graphic, uh, that, uh, our comms team put together in terms of what the city's responsibilities are currently as we, as we practice. So, uh, we, we go through, um, you know, the, the services we provide, these for both the municipal and the provincial, we've tried to organize those in terms of the overall cost to the city, the cost to the provincial government. We didn't get into the federal government too much because there's not a lot of overlap there, but, um, for, for ourselves, uh, our biggest expense is, is our policing services. Next is our roads and stormwater management, uh, water and sewer utility, fire and emergency management, economic development and tourism, recreation facilities, parks, trails and plant, and playgrounds, uh, then environment and sustainability, then our development inspection and building permits, uh, and then lastly transit. Um, you're probably well familiar with, with what the government, provincial government is responsible for. Their big ones, of course, are, are health and wellness and education. Uh, they look after roads as well, but they look after roads outside of the cities. Uh, so we're not, we're not tripping over each other on that one. They look after all the labor, workforce and advanced learning pieces, social development, housing, uh, environment, climate action. We have a little overlap there with our, with our sustainability, uh, uh, committee and, and department. Um, justice and public safety really handles the, the court system and public safety outside of the cities. Um, economic development, a bit of overlap there with our, with our economic development and tourism group, um, as, as with tourism. So you can see that there, you know, there is relatively well-defined areas of responsibility. Some of them overlap, some of them, um, maybe don't match up perfectly with, um, you know, who's funding, uh, to provide those services. We, we know that there's only one taxpayer, uh, a Charlotte Town resident pays a significant amount of income tax and consumption tax through GST and HST, uh, to both the provincial and federal government and also plays, pays property tax to both the province and, and municipal governments. But paying tax to more than one level of government to provide the same services, you know, kinda counterintuitive and could be a source of frustration for ratepayers. So, so that may be something we wanna, uh, consider as, as we go forward. Um, just in terms of, you know, establishing, you know, doing this review, and I, I do appreciate you bringing this, this up, Counsel Twill, cause I think it's an important discussion to have, particularly in, in the environment we're in with, with, with tight fiscal challenges to provide our core services. So, uh, it, it was timely and, and appreciated. Um, there are some areas where, where we kind of overlap with the province. Um, transit would be one, some of our recreational facilities. The Federation of Municipalities was, uh, in the media yesterday talking about advocating for a provincial recreation levy to support shared recreational infrastructure. We know that it's not just Charlotte Town residents that use the Kerry Pool. Um, tourism and economic development would be a couple of others, so. Um, with that, uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, you know, where finance would like to go with, with, with grants and, and how we support external groups. And that is trying to do, uh, some reporting and value for, value for investment, uh, analysis as we go forward. Um, you know, one, one example I, I have is we have, you know, Bella Lion Kerry, uh, the Bella Lion Kerry facility and we have the Eastling Center. Uh, one has an aquatic facility, two ice surfaces and, and an annual operating subsidy of about a million, million and one hundred thousand dollars. Eastling Center has one ice surface and an event center and about the same, um, operating subsidy and about four hundred thousand dollars in annual grants. So, you know, things that we might consider as we look at that is, you know, comparatively how do ratepayers value these facilities? Um, who benefits from the services provided at these facilities and who pays for the costs? Um, you know, another question might be asked, could these two facilities be effectively managed by a shared management team to more, to, to, to deliver it more, more cost-effectively? So, you know, moving forward, those are the things that we perhaps wanna dig into and in, in consultation with, with council. Um, okay, that's all I have to say on that. I did wanna give you a little bit of context though in terms of the, the seven point seven million dollars in, in grants. Um, if you look at the first page of the grants listing, um, there's a total on the bottom there of five point five million dollars of the seven point six, or seven point seven, we'll call it. Um, those grants are tied to formal agreements. So for example, um, Bella Lion Center, we have a, a, an operating agreement, uh, Boys and Girls Club, um, Inter-City Camp, Tourism Accommodation Levy. So of those, of, of the seven point six, there's, there's five point five, which are directly tied to, to, to agreements that really can't be undone at this point. So that just leaves about two point five of the seven point, uh, seven point seven, um, really that, that we have any room to, to, to consider a whole lot at this point. to, to consider a whole lot at this point. Not to say that, looking forward, as, you know, we talked about the two major sports facilities, you know, there may be different ways to do things that we may want to encourage them to, to try to experience some operational savings. So there, there are, there are things we can do in the longer term. I did also want to highlight that of that five-point-five million that's on that first page, there's, there's about two million dollars of that, which, a little more, two-point-two million dollars of that, which is funded, funded completely external to the city. So the Tourism Accommodation Levy is, is levy, is a levy on.
It's an in and out.
Yeah, those who stay at, at tourist accommodations in the city. So they're paying that, it's not coming out of tax dollars. So, so really of the five-point-five that, that, you know, you take that Tourism Accommodation Levy out, it only leaves you with three-point-five. And there's another of, of the, the Boys and Girls Club and the Inter-City Life, Inter-City Life Camp, that Building Safer Communities, that is entirely funded externally as well from Public Safety Canada. So it, it whittles the number down a little bit. The seven-point-seven sounds like a, like a massive number, and it is. But, you know, we're, we're tied to some, some of our major assets in terms of recreational facilities. There's a couple of other big ones there on that first page, Charlestown Airport and Confederation Center of the Air, it's those two.
Affordable housing.
Yep.
But just, just on that, Dan, is the Inter-City Life Camp, is that tied into the Boys and Girls Club?
No, it's a separate, it's a separate nonprofit that, that delivers some programming for, under that program, Building Safer Communities.
And does the city already give money to it?
Yeah, there's a minor grant under, I'm not sure what bucket it's in, but it is listed in, in the listing there.
So is it, are you going over the first page?
I'm going to leave that to Lane to, to run through, but I just wanted to kind of provide that high-level context just so that we, to manage expectations in terms of understanding that there's, there's not seven-point-seven really here that we can go through and, and, you know, whittle, whittle or save a couple million. Really, the, the stuff that's not tied to agreements is, we're really just talking about two million bucks. With that, I guess we can hand it off. We, if, if you don't mind, folks, we could probably change up the order a little bit here and let some of the folks that don't have a lot to talk about go home a little earlier.
Good.
Donna, if you're ready, maybe I might get you to run through your presentation and then ask council if they have questions. And then we'll move on, perhaps next to Water and Wastewater, the utility, please.
Donna, can I just get a question from Counselor Beck first?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, your worship. Just a quick question, Danny. On the agreements that we have, I think it might be worthwhile to know what the terms on those are, like when, how long are we locked into those agreements for? You know, if we're locked in, we're locked in, that's fine. But I, personally, I wouldn't mind knowing, like, you know, are we locked into fifteen-year deals, five-year deals, are they renewable, that sort of thing. And you don't need that now, but at some point in time, that might be good information to have.
I, I can tell you, Counselor Beck, through your worship, that in the package, if you hover over the, the name of the grant, there is an information page which a lot of those questions are answered in the, in the detail that's behind, so.
And that's part of the digital copy?
Part of the digital copy.
Donna? Thank you.
Thank you, worship. So in the Planning and Heritage Department, we administer the Heritage Incentive Program and the Affordable Housing Incentive Program. So I will go through the Affordable Housing Incentive Program first. So this program was implemented in September of 2018 through a council resolution. The objective was to encourage and assist private and nonprofit sectors to develop diverse housing projects, typically to provide affordable housing units for residents in Charlestown. So the key incentives under this program, that we do offer a reduced parking rate of zero-point-seven-five spaces per affordable housing dwelling unit. And that's within, if the units are within five-hundred meters of a public transit stop. We also offer a fifty percent rebate, that's building fees granted at the time of occupancy permit approval. And then we offer a diminution property tax incentive of up to ten years of reduced municipal property tax for only the affordable units. So value generated over the period since we've implemented the program, we've issued incentives for approximately a hundred-and-forty-two units. A hundred-and-thirty-two are already built and ten is yet to be built. In terms of our investment, we've given out incentives per year by the city and in 2020, we gave out thirty-four thousand and sixty-six dollars to a high of a hundred-and-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-three in 2024. And to date, in 2025, we've given out over a hundred thousand in terms of tax incentives. Over that period, we've also given out building rebates of approximately eighty-one, just over eighty-one thousand dollars. Strategic alignment, it's, this program is aligned to the community building and place making strategy in our strategic plan and specifically to enhance Charlestown as a great place to live and as a destination for visitors. It also speaks to the infrastructure and the environment pillar. In terms of criteria, how we give out these incentives, it applies to developers, provincial bodies, crown corporations, nonprofit agencies, rental cooperatives and other organizations that provide new affordable housing units. And incentives only apply to units that are occupied as affordable and this has to be confirmed by the province. Requirement submission of a signed affordable housing agreement with the P E I Housing Corporation has to be submitted to the department. And the agreement must outline the number of subsidized units. In terms of eligibility, residential projects must meet the affordable housing definition that's outlined in the city's zoning and development bylaw. And developments must comply with all zoning and development bylaw regulations and local building and fire codes. So that's a overview of the Affordable Housing Program. If there are any questions, I'll take them now or I'll move on to the Heritage Incentive Program.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, worship. Donna, can you go back to your tax incentive slide? You passed it. Go back the other way to there. Twenty-twenty-two, thirty-five thousand, skip twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, it over-tripled. Is there an explanation to why for tax incentives jumped so high?
So in 2023 was when the department took over this, this particular program. We did not issue any incentives in that year, but in 2024, we had to pay out to a developer who owns a property that got is incentives under the 2018 policy that is a little bit different from the others. So he's entitled to a hundred percent in terms of his rebate and incentives. That's the only property that has that arrangement. So that's why it jumped that much.
Does that carry over to 2025? Because we didn't really decrease much from last year to this year. We only decreased three thousand.
That's to date. So it's, it's not for the complete year. We still have some more that we'll have to pay out over the period of 2025.
Okay. Did you have the heritage grants?
Yeah. So the Heritage Incentives Program was implemented in January of 2000 through, again, a resolution of council. And the purpose was to provide financial assistance for appropriate development of heritage resources throughout the city. We offer incentives through graduated tax frees. So we do that five-year tax freeze on the increase on the municipal portion of the assessed value of designated heritage properties in the city. We also eliminate heritage permit fees for those properties. And we also do an annual heritage awards where we recognize individuals or groups or significant contributions to the city's heritage. We also offer grants and so if owners of designated heritage properties want to do any exterior alterations, general maintenance or window replacements, we offer a grant to them. In terms of value generated, it's always hard to put a, a value amount in terms of a dollar figure on heritage. But heritage incentives provide tangible community support for property owners of heritage resources, offer financial assistance to support restoration and maintenance and enhance heritage preservation, sorry, for the benefit of the broader community. So in terms of how we consider projects for approval under the program, we ensure that the project is aligned with the city's official plan policies, that it encourages additional downtown investment and that it complies with the standards of the Heritage Preservation Bylaw here in Charlestown, as well as the zoning bylaw and of course, relevant building and fire codes. Our investments, so we offer X, an amount in up to five thousand dollars on properties that want to do exterior alterations and that's offered at thirty percent of the total eligible cost. So up to five thousand dollars on thirty percent of the total eligible cost. General maintenance may be funded to a maximum of one thousand dollars. And signage on designated properties are offered at fifty percent of total eligible cost to a maximum of a thousand dollars. And window replacements may be funded at fifty percent to a maximum of five thousand dollars. This is just to ensure that we encourage owners of designated properties to maintain using wooden windows to support the heritage characteristics of their properties. Approximate annual investment so far, over the period, we've given out on an annual basis approximately sixty thousand dollars in heritage grants and twenty thousand dollars in tax freezes. Strategic alignment, so the Heritage Incentive Program is aligned to the infrastructure and environmental pillow of the strategic plan and of course, to contribute to respect, preserve and enhance heritage assets while also embracing the principle of adaptive reuse and the circular economy. We do have a process that we follow when we are giving out any grants or tax freezes and applications have to be submitted to the heritage officer. Along with that application, they must include at least two cost estimates for the proposed works. The factors that we use to consider the application includes availability of funds on an annual basis, alignment with long-term conservation plans, comparative costs provided by multiple bidders. So we would do a analysis of the cost estimates, the use of historically appropriate materials. So again, the use of, say, wooden windows in, instead of vinyl will be a consideration. In terms of application outcomes, we may approve with or without conditions, or we also may refuse the application. That's the end. And if you have any questions, I'm open to answer.
Debra.
Thank you. And I'm just curious, when I look at this, last year it was sixty, the year before it was sixty, if I recall. So we're cutting it down to fifty this year. And I'm just wondering why, why these grants cut. I don't see a consistency in, in, in cross departments. This is just ten thousand dollars less. So, I mean, we're a historic city, so it meets, it meets our pillars and I'm just, if, if I'm wondering, was it cut because you had to cut your operational budget? Or what are the reasons?
So through to the debattee. No, it was cut because we've, we've, we haven't had as much applications over the last period as we had previously. So we decided to do that ten thousand dollars cut just to support what we've been seeing over the previous years.
If I could just follow up with that. So what did we spend last year?
We spent about thirty-something thousand dollars on grants. So we felt we could comfortably cut the amount for this fiscal period to support the possible applications that would come in.
So that money would have been repurposed into some other aspect of the operational budget?
That would be a question for my finance manager.
If, if it's not spent, Lane?
Yeah, thank you. So if the, if the money goes unspent in any budget line or if there's a small overspend, it just goes to our overall, overall general deficit or surplus at the end of the year?
Okay. Donna, thank you very much. Okay.
Josh, would you mind coming forward?
Josh?
Yeah.
Water and wastewater, our manager?
And sustainability next?
Yeah.
Okay, Josh, go ahead, please.
Perfect. Thank you, your worship. So this is for the Water and Sewer Utility with our external grants. We'll just get right into it. Great. Thank you. Oh, that's awesome. So the nature of our grants, historically, the Water and Sewer Utility has provided grants to either research groups or watershed associations, two areas that are, are direct relationship with the operations that we have. The research groups would be conducting work, typically research that could not be completed in-house. This is either due to expertise or capacity and is a direct benefit for the utility. While the work completed by watershed groups have a broader societal benefit and a direct positive environmental impact. So those are the two areas that we have typically received grants for. The value generated, so the work completed by our watershed groups are invaluable in terms of wellfield protection, environmental sustainability and protection of wildlife and habitat. These watershed groups, they plant trees and other flora, they monitor the environment, water life or wildlife and other natural environment improving tasks. The healthier the environment, the healthier our source waters can remain. These watershed groups are charitable organizations utilizing their donations, resources and volunteer input. The grants awarded provide an exponential return on investment. Similar results could not be achieved as economically if work was either hired out, contracted out or performed internally. So for our investments, historically, the Water and Sewer Utility has in recent years provided an annual grant of thirty-two thousand dollars to the Winter River Trachity Bay Watershed Association. The utility has partnered with the Winter River Watershed Association since 2011. The utility has budgeted this year and in previous years, twenty thousand dollars in additional funds in the event a research grant is required. In years past, the utility had presented two ten-thousand-dollar grants to U P E I for a research conducted on behalf of the utility. For our strategic alignment, the grants provided by the utility increases the city's sustainability by improving the natural environment, protecting our source waters and actively monitoring the flora and fauna within and, and, within and outside of the city. Additionally, these grants provide direct opportunities for collaboration and partnership with our environmental and research groups. These groups have tremendous expertise in their fields and often initiate dialogue on, on improvement opportunities. So when, when an application is received or when, when a grant is required, the utility does review these grants on a case-by-case basis and looks for direct tangible and measurable benefits when assessing each request. So if anybody has any questions, glad, glad to answer them.
Okay, Counselor Twill?
Thank you for your presentation. So you, you, you look at the, the requests, then make a decision in-house to, to provide grants to some of the, some of the groups that you mentioned. So does the department receive a report? So, does the department receive a report at the end of the year, a report outlining some of the projects that they worked on, the work that was completed, and in terms of criteria, do you have a standard or a benchmark which clearly demonstrates whether or not they met the threshold of, you know, whether it's a grant of 30,000, or 10,000, the University of Prince Edward Island, or whatever the case may be? So, are reports provided to the water and sewer department, so you can look at it, are those reports shared with the water and sewer committee? So they can say, because water and sewer committee makes a recommendation to council, and council has to approve it, so are the reports shared with the committee, starting there, as a recommending body? And then again, are there benchmarks, are there standards where they have to meet that threshold?
Absolutely, no, it's a great question, Counselor Twill, and each year, typically with our watershed groups, we do receive their yearly financials, their high-level plan of what they anticipate to achieve for each calendar year, where that funding specifically will go, so those reports are provided to us, and we do have a dialogue back and forth to ensure or see where they are with those guidelines. I'd have to double-check if those are shared directly with the utility, or if they're shared indirectly, but we do receive those from the groups.
And is there a possibility they could be shared with the committee, and then with council to make sure, or just become more informed, you know, just become more informed, say, okay, this group received this amount of money, here's the work that they did, and again, I'll just reiterate, are there benchmarks and standards that these particular groups, whether it's water and sewer, or any other group for that matter, that receives money for research and community projects? I'd like to know what the threshold is.
No, that's a great question, and I would say it's an informal threshold, more so than a formal threshold, but we can provide the information that would be, I guess, that we receive, as long as it's not anything of confidentiality. I know some financials may have that light to them, but absolutely, we can share what they plan to do, what they have done, and then provide that to our committee, and then have them provide that to council.
Thanks, Josh, thank you very much. And our next?
Thank you, Josh, Christina, Katrina Kristol will be presenting on behalf of Sustainability and Environment.
Climate change expert, so we're going to page three of six, I think, is it?
Hi, everybody, thank you so much for having me here tonight, I'm covering for Jessica, so I will do my very best to answer any questions that you may have, but if there's anything I don't know, I will follow up with her. So there's three main areas the Sustainability Department offers grants within, they all work to support the actions in the city's strategic plan, climate action plan, and our transit plan. So the first one relates to transit, and it's a grant that goes annually to Pat and the Elephant, offering ongoing annual investment for paratransit service in Charlottetown, so that is something that many municipalities offer themselves, and at a much greater cost, so that's something that's great, they're able to work with us on. We also do our watershed groups, two, Ellen's Creek and Wright's Creek watershed groups, so those are also ongoing and annual investments for their support with environmental stewardship and conservation projects within Charlottetown. And lastly, we have our community sustainability micro grants, and they're awarded to different groups every year based on applications received and reviewed, and the projects must speak to alignment with the goals of the climate action plan. So in terms of value, our grants make up a fairly small amount of money for much larger value generated. All of those grants go towards projects that are also seeking support from other places, so we're able to contribute our portion to gain the benefit from them, but they're also working to gain support from grant funding from other levels of government and those types of things. Pat and the Elephant funding means, as I said, that we don't have to offer paratransit services on our own, and it means that that service can be offered to residents. The watershed grant means we have increased capacity for the delivery of important environmental projects in Charlottetown, so it might be tree planting, monitoring, stewardship of our natural areas, many of which are on city-owned property, invasive species removal, and they also work extensively with us on community engagement and education, giving us sort of a different reach and relationship within the community. And then the micro grants provide seed money to support community projects that relate to our climate action goals, and they really inspire community action, and the community working directly with us to work towards those climate action goals. In terms of investment, the Pat and the Elephant grant is $60,000 a year, that's been ongoing for longer than any of the current sustainability staff have been here. Ellen's Creek and Wright's Creek watershed groups, that's a total of $20,000 per year, split between the two groups. However, I'll note that this year and next year, there'll be additional funds going because of an FCM grant that was secured, so this year, it's an extra $22,600 for tree planting support, and next year, it's $17,600, but those are covered by that FCM grant, and those groups working with us to implement that project. And then in terms of the community micro grants, it's $15,000 a year, with each individual applicant only eligible to receive up to $2,500. Terms of strategic alignment, it supports a number of the commitments in the strategic plan relating to sustainability, collaboration and partnerships, community engagement and inclusion, and then in terms of the strategic plan pillars, it's community building and place-making, governance and civic engagement, inclusive economic growth, and infrastructure and the environment. Each one sort of has a different process when it comes to approval and criteria. With Pat and the Elephant, they're the only nonprofit paratransit service in Charlottetown, so with that, they make a request for funding every year during the budget process. It's a similar story with the watershed groups, there's only two nonprofit organizations in the watershed realm that are working within the city limits, and so they also make their request each year with the annual budget review. With the micro grants, it's done as more of a competition, so the funds are put forward as part of the budget process, but then, once the budget's approved, we open for new applications, assuming that the funds were approved, and then a review panel, mostly of city staff, sometimes also including some representatives from some of the city's advisory boards, meets to determine which will be successful applicants, and then, once we award those, they do provide annual reports, as well as we promote the projects on city's website and social media. Oops. So with that, I can take any questions you might have.
Counsel Twill?
Yep, thank you for your presentation. It's interesting that, as far as, you know, Ellen's Creek and Wright's Creek, where we're providing grants under environment sustainability, at water and sewer, it also provides, Josh just gave us a presentation, to different community groups as well. So Ellen's Creek and Wright's Creek, is that administered by the city, or is that a grant to an organization as well? And if that's the case, why is it not all done under one umbrella?
Yeah, that's a good question, so the grants that our department provides goes to the Ellen's Creek watershed group, which is one nonprofit entity, and one goes to the Wright's Creek group, or the Hillsborough watershed group, so those are the two watersheds actually within the city limits of Charlottetown that are doing watershed maintenance work. The grant that Josh was referring to underwater and sewer utility goes to the Winter River watershed group, and that's the one that covers the wellfield site, and so that's the differentiation there. So, yeah.
And as I asked, underwater and sewer, are there benchmarks, are there standards, do you receive a report, so you can share a report with senior management, share it with the committee, saying, you know, they've achieved their objectives, and, you know, the criteria was fulfilled?
Yeah, so it's a similar story, I would say, to what Josh said, in that we do receive a report annually from them that lets us know what they've done. The targets that they seek to reach often are more informal rather than formal, however, in our particular situation, staff work very closely with the staff at the watershed, so from the beginning of the year, there's a lot of conversation back and forth as to what projects will be undertaken, and kind of what those goals for the year will be, it fluctuates year to year, but, and then staff work often very closely with the staff at the watershed groups throughout the season to kind of keep things on track, and make sure it's a collaborative process.
Thanks, Katrina, thank you very much. Okay? Next?
Thank you, Katrina, next up, Frank Quinn, Parks and Recreation.
Good.
And Frank's grants, if you're looking at the paper copy, begin on page four to six, for Parks and Recreation subsidization, subsidies?
Four.
Yeah, page four, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, McCabe is stepping out because she's in conflict, which one? Which one is it?
Inner-city.
Oh, inner-city life skills, okay, thank you. Frank?
All right, so first of all, we have sort of two types of grants, one is a minor sports subsidy program, which was approved by council back in 2004 by resolution, it's been in place since 1995, since amalgamation, so it's been in place for many years, and I won't go through all the verbiage there, but there is an actual policy in place. The city is committed to the continued growth and development of amateur sport delivery in our community, and through the City of Charlottetown Parks and Recreation Department offers a minor sports subsidy program to nonprofit minor sport organizations which have a mandate to deliver sport related to activities, related, sorry, related activities to resident youth. So there's a number of objectives that we, you know, that they have to meet, and like I said, the program's been in place for, since 1995. The nature of the grants, there is a number of grants that our department, and it's a small number of grants that we give, and it's the Parks and Recreation Department is committed to supporting identified nonprofit groups who offer specialized programming that is not able to be offered by the city. And these grants help the groups to offset some of their costs associated with offering their programs, and these groups include the co-ed boxing and parasport grants, which have been in place since 1995, and the Hillsborough Park Action Committee grant has been in place since 2005, and then there's a youth initiative support has been in place since 2005, and this enables to assist a variety of groups. And the value generated, so minor sports subsidy recipients receive a value for their program registration, because it is a city resident, its cost is lower to register for someone who lives in Charlottetown than somebody who lives outside of Charlottetown, a subsidy will keep the registration fee lower, so more youth have an opportunity to participate in minor sport. And the groups that receive a grant offer their programs at a reasonable rate, in part because of the support the city is able to provide them. Our investments, so for the minor sports subsidy program, the investment is just under $200,000, that's for the upcoming season, and that has stayed pretty well the same over the years, so we've been able to keep our numbers in minor sport at a consistent level, and I think the minor sports subsidy helps to contribute to that as well. And then our grants, you'll see the groups there, the co-ed boxing, we did do a reduction this year of 3%, when we were trying to reduce our grant amounts, or to balance our budget, so we had the co-ed boxing groups, 740, parasport, recreation PI, 3,875, Hillsborough Park Action Committee, a little over $9,000, the CYC, Public Slip, 7,300, and we currently have an agreement in place for them from 2024 to 2033, and then we have a small amount for youth initiative support, $4,000. And these grants distributed in the past included inner-city youth, inner-city life skills camp, youth bowling bantams, and creative acres. Each year, we'll receive requests, and we'll review those, we'll receive a lot of requests, and all of these groups, these grants, each year, they make a request, an annual request to be considered in the upcoming budget, so for the grants, it's not assumed that they're going to be in there every year. So strategic alignment, community building and place-making, the minor sports subsidy program has assisted in the continued growth and development of minor sport groups within Charlottetown, and being a resident of Charlottetown, residents will receive a benefit when registering their children for minor sport programs. The governance and civic engagement, the city serves as a leader in supporting minor sport organizations based within Charlottetown, prioritize people to help strengthen our community and quality of life. With the minor sports subsidy policy in place, the city is also able to track each group's total participation numbers and determine the number of residents and non-residents, so it allows us to give a good balance of those numbers as well. Infrastructure and environment, by providing support to minor sport groups and not-for-profit participation, or not-for-profit groups, participation numbers should remain consistent or increase, and they have been remained consistent over the last 24 years that I've been with the city. Being able to track the minor sport participation numbers enables the city to better assess the needs for new and improved infrastructure, so that's been able, we've been able to balance that as well over the years. Criteria and decision process for recommended approval, so the minor sports subsidy policy, there is an actual detailed criteria, each minor sport group has to submit a request each year, and submit the list of participants, and we review them, the program coordinator and assistant program coordinator reviews them, confirms that they're city residents, then, and then if youth, so if the youth is confirmed, it's living in Charlotte, then the subsidy amount, the request will be paid, and all money is paid actually to the minor sport group, so they charge a resident, non-resident rate. As for the grants, so we receive a letter every year of requests, but it's what, you know, what type of program is being offered by the nonprofit group making the request? Is this program filling a void in programming that the Parks and Recreation Department is not able to offer? Has this group received a grant before, and, you know, sort of what has the record been? Have they done a good job? And then an official letter, like I indicated, is received, and are the programs being offered, are they benefiting city residents? That's one thing to keep in mind. All right, that's the end of my slideshow.
Counsel Twill?
And I apologize, I seem to have a bit of a horse throat here, I'm not normally this deep-voiced.
Thank you, Frank, it's a pretty good program, and it certainly provides funding to a lot of different recreational groups in our city. Question I have is intrigued with the amount of money that we award sport PEI, I think it's approximately $60,000, and that money is, I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, that money is to provide subsidies to different sporting organizations here in the City of Charlottetown, if I have it correctly. So the question I have is, why wouldn't, why wouldn't that $60,000 that's being provided to subsidies to different sporting organizations throughout the City of Charlottetown, why wouldn't that be administered by our own Parks and Recreation staff? I mean, we got two subsidy programs going on here, I don't know if it's the same standards, I don't know if it's the same threshold, the same criteria, I don't know what the reporting mechanism is, I don't know, so I would think, I would think if we're providing that kind of monies, and it's providing the same type of incentives to the different participants of these different organizations, don't you think it'd be advantageous, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, Frank, but I thought, since you gave a breakdown here of the different sporting organizations throughout the City of Charlottetown, why wouldn't we have our staff administer that criteria, and why wouldn't we have our staff track these things on an annual basis?
Counsel, just a point of order, Counsel Twill, is that on page four of six? Is that there, or is that under grants? Danny, is that under grants?
The sport, House of Sport grant falls under the community grants currently.
So can I just clarify, is that your responsibility, Frank?
No, Your Worship, so, yeah, so it's not.
Can we break to the grants on that?
Yeah, and I just, and the one thing I jumped over that I didn't see on my thing is that our grants that we provide are to support resident youth that use city-owned or operated. or operated sport facilities. So it's ones that we actually own and operate, so youth that participate scenarios. The other one is not managed by our, by the city or our department.
But we're on page four of six. That's what you gave presentation on. Correct? Counsel McLeir. No, no, we, Counsel Twill, we, no, we have to move on. Yeah, I'm. Well, the issue here is, is these, no, these, this is the issue right here. There it is. Okay. No. Okay.
From a comparison perspective, and, you know, like, you jumped in and you seem a little bit hostile. And I don't understand, I don't understand your emotions. You know what?
Counsel, Counsel McLeir.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Frank. Just, just curious, on the, on page four or six, on the two line items, Hillsborough Park Action Committee, 1660, and Hillsborough Park Action Committee, 7380, I say whatever, around $9,000. Can you just clarify what the spirit of that's about for Hillsborough Park Action Committee? The sort of, sort of, I guess, what goes on with it, or what's, what's its purpose in funding?
So yes, Counsel McLeir, so, yeah, so we've been funding that group for like about 20 years. And initially, at one time, we used to try to deliver programs out in Hillsborough, and this volunteer group came forward and indicated that they were willing to deliver programs in the community. And they were able to deliver more programs for less money. So the types of programs they deliver are the summer day camp program, they offer a Friday after-school program, they do community events such as yard sales, corn boils. They also, they also will take youth to different events and activities and whatnot. So they're sort of, they're based right in the community, they know what the community sort of is like, what, who the youth are there. And they will hire a staff person to help run the program right out of the Hillsborough Community Center, which we, if we were doing it directly ourselves, it would cost us a lot more, and we wouldn't be able to deliver the scope of program that they deliver. So it's, we feel it's a very good value for, for the $9,000. And the group is actually combined as one, it's just never been changed. It's in two different counts, but it actually is just one group that delivers.
Okay. Thank, Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. Will we be going over page two of six tonight?
Well, we have to close down this meeting at 6:50 because we have a public meeting. So I think we're going to have to come back to this, and I really appreciate the staff work that's been put into this, not only in the first round, but in this round. So what, what's your question?
My question, I guess, Counsel Twill raised a question here that got a flag going with me. House of Sport, which Counsel Bernard mentioned earlier, that it's a sports subsidy of $60,000, manager Frank just said it, but subsidies for all these sporting events. So is there a double dipping going on? Like, I'm just curious. It seems to.
Can you clarify, Frank? I, I think the House of Sport is not, it's for the property, the place they're using, correct?
That's my understanding, and Counsel Bernard might be able to speak more towards it. So they get a grant that helps to offset the costs associated with operating that large building, and there's many groups that are based out of that building that are not necessarily Charlestown minor hockey, it could be, it's, for example, hockey P I, or it could be, so it's, Counsel Bernard might be able to speak more towards that, but yeah, that's my, that's my understanding.
The issue here is that he's already declared conflict of interest on this issue, on this matter. House of Sport? Okay, okay.
I mean, not that I know a lot of, I remember it came through council about 10 years ago, and, and Frank is right, our subsidies that Parks and Recs look after goes to the sport facilities that we own, the city owns.
Right.
So when this come up, this was, this was, like I said, it seems like it's about 10 years ago, but anyway, it was, so the sports that are out in the House of Sport, like island gymnastics, P I boxing, taekwondo, those other sports, that was their subsidy. That's the way I understand it. So the city of Charlestown gives those sports a subsidy. And they use that subsidy, and that's based on also, I think Dan, it's based on square footage, maybe?
Counsel, Counsel, Counsel Bernard.
I just remember it coming to council.
I know. There's some, maybe.
Quick answer. I can.
Just quick answer, oh, can you clarify? Because there's some counselors saying that he's in conflict, but if we go back to the community grants on page two, where this is, Dan, if I'm looking at sport P I, Royalty Center, House of Sport, 62,740, is that what he's talking about?
Yes, yes, it is.
Is he in conflict on that?
I don't know.
Are you? Okay. Where are you in conflict under, which is sport P I, kids, deputy? Just on page two, if you go down, it's kids sport, sport P I, kids sport, 10,000. That's where he's in conflict.
And.
That's his program. Correct, Dan? Am I correct?
Yeah, as far as I know. I can confirm on the House of Sport grant request, the 62,000 that was requested, I think staff recommended 25. But the, the 62,000 is calculated at $1.50 a square foot for the footprint of those sports bodies that occupy office or, or sports space at the House of Sport.
So again, we're not subsidizing the athlete, we're subsidizing the space.
And that came into play, your worship, back when I was a department head, pre-2015, when all of those organizations moved out to that building. So it's, that agreement's very, has been around for a very long time.
Presser button, there, Trevor. Okay, Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you. And I could be wrong, I understand that if we're subsidizing the rent, I thought that the province subsidized these organizations that are out in the House of Sport for their rent. I could be wrong, but I've been told.
Mr., just, I just want to get a clarification. Again, okay. So are we subsidizing the rent, or are we providing a subsidy for the cost of that facility?
I believe the payments, thank you, your worship, I believe the payment goes to the House of Sport to subsidize the rental costs for, for those individual sports. What they do internally, in terms of if they reduce the bill to kickboxing, or whatever the sport is, I, I, I'm not aware of how that logistic works.
I just have Counsel McLeir. You're all right? Okay. And Counsel Twill was, go ahead, Counsel Twill.
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting, we're having a discussion, but when I brought it up a few minutes earlier, I was chastised.
No, you weren't chastised.
Yes, I was.
No.
Anyway.
Anyways, continue.
But the bottom line, no, the bottom line is this, we're here for information purposes, to get as much information as possible. So when I raised that about, about sport P I, I, I have no idea what, how the money's allotted, or what it's, where it's allocated, and what, what purpose, what the purpose is. So, so it is for space rental. So is there a reporting mechanism, again, again, where there's benchmarks and standards, and how that money is spent? Are other city organizations able to take advantage of, be able to take advantage of that, that, that facility, that, you know, the House of Sport, or however it's classified? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what the, what the criteria is, so that, you know, decisions are, making informed decisions. And, and again, the reporting mechanism and how these benchmarks and standards are met.
Dan, and then.
Sure. If I may, your worship, through to Counsel Twill. So that particular grant is going to fall under the finance group, and we will have an opportunity to talk there about that. So, and Lane is familiar with, with how that, that process works. So we might be best to defer it until, until Lane's on the, on the rail.
So my understanding is, Counsel Twill, is the subsidies we give to the sports on the facilities we own, that lowers the registration costs. That's, that's, so the subsidy that they give to the sport out in the House of Sport, since it's not our facility, they use the square footage of each sport and use that to keep the registration cost down by keeping the rent down.
Okay. No, Kate, just one sec, I got counsel.
They're not our facilities, no. When they, so soccer, hockey, figure skating, those are our facilities they're using. So the subsidy goes to keep their registration fees down. My understanding is, in the House of Sport, the sport groups that came to us about 10 years ago to get equal footing for subsidy also for their sports, that's the, that's the, that was worked out with the sports subsidy we gave them. It was also worked out per square footage. So for example, taekwondo, I don't know how many square feet it has, but it's based on the square foot for P I boxing, or taekwondo, or gymnastics, whatever size space they're using, it's based on their subsidy. And then that goes towards, they put it towards the rent to keep the registrations low.
Counsel Beck.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little overly grainy.
We're getting really into the weeds here.
This is, this is, we're, we're talking about how these organizations have their own operational needs. How they disperse of that money is up to them. We have to decide what we're going to allocate to them. I don't, I'm not getting into telling, sport P I, Young at Heart Theater, Friends of the Farm, any of these operations, how to spend the money that we're giving to them. We're supporting them. We're supporting a variety of needs. These are low, call them low participating sports that need support. We're providing support to sports, sports that are not necessarily massive numbers in mainstream that can be easily funded. So we're getting way overboard here with this stuff. And, and so I think we just say, let's stick to the amount. I think we've received a justification as to why. I had a question as to why it went from 25 to 62,000. That was answered here tonight for me, in terms of how that goes. So I think we're getting a little, a little bit too much. So let's stick to what the money is and go with that.
Thank you, Mary Brown. Just to close, just to close the loop on this, so you move on, I'm just looking at the circulating document that was provided in this one, and it says, is this a one-time grant, or is it an ongoing obligation? And the applicant, it says the anti-applicant applies to the grant annually. And if you know, please explain why we began supporting the organization and whether those reasons are still valid today. Funding the Royalty Center will keep the rental fees low. Encouraging user groups to stay and supporting community engagement and tourism. End of story. Thank you.
Frank? Thank you. I, again, appreciate all the work, actually twice the work some of you put into this. Who's next?
Thank you, Frank. Up next, economic development, tourism, and culture.
Okay. Can you just call in?
I will say that most of, most of Wayne's grants start on page five of six.
And what's the digital copy?
It would be page five.
Same thing. Thank you.
And just so you know, there, there were a few of his grants that we moved up on, onto the first page because they had agreements attached, and one was the tourism accommodation levy for 1.9 million dollars. And also Confederation Center of the Arts for 289,000, Taxon Lou grant, and Children's Library grant for 68,000. So those, those aren't found on, on that page five and six. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship, and for the additional information, Dan. So I'll try to rifle through this as quickly as possible, but trying to ensure that your, your questions are answered. So the nature, there's two sections within our department. The first one is related to events and memberships, I guess we would call it. The nature of our grants is, is quite broad and quite dense. We use event hosting grants and support events that stimulate economic tourism, social and cultural prosperity that are, that have a profound impact on our community. Grants are a core part of the city's event attraction and hosting file, as council is aware. And event hosting fees are exempt from the grant's bylaw that you're aware of as well. We're constantly in the marketplace from an attraction and growth perspective, not only attracting new business, but growing existing business. Sport tourism and obviously festival and event hosting is a high priority for us. We bucket these into three categories. Hosting fees, an example of that is Canada Soccer U15 Cup that will host later this fall. City types of hosted events where the municipality is required to enter into a hosting fee and/or agreements. Number two is core signature events. Examples of this would be the Jack Frost Winter Fest, Old Home Week, Gold Cup Parade, or the P I International Shellfish Festival. These events, we have a long, longstanding relationship with and partnership and help develop involved over the year, and they form a important part of our community. And then strategic event grants, which are examples such as Moonlight Bazaar, the Charlestown Christmas Festival, Canadian Cornhole Classic, and the Atlantic Slam W, which we had hosted last year. These events more align with strategy, they're new events and/or one-offs. Fees and membership grants are tied to agreements with Charlestown Civic Center Management, Inc., East Link Center, and the Charlestown Islanders Hockey Club. And then, as Dan mentioned, the tourism accommodation levy is valued at approximately $2 million annually, and it's split equally between three industry partners, namely Discover Charlestown, Meet P I, and the Charlestown Special Events Reserve Fund. It's also important to note, the nature of our grants also leverage other investment from other levels of government and/or industry partners. Value generated, the value of the event tourism to Charlestown is approximately $150 million annually. This data is gathered through Stats Canada, our partners at Tourism Canada, Discover Charlestown, Meet P I, other partners that are in the marketplace. Sport tourism sectors worth $7.4 billion nationally, with 135 million of that being right here in Prince Edward Island, and 75% of that is estimated activity that takes place in the capital city. Sport tourism has an impact and has doubled more, more than doubled over the last 10 years, and Charlestown is a leader in this sector, as you're well aware. Festivals and events are worth approximately $30 million annually to Charlestown's economy. Based on the data collected by the agency T1, the Quebec Major Junior Hockey League teams, 16 teams collectively contribute $268 million in direct activity. The Charlestown Islanders contribute 7.3 million directly and 15.3 million indirectly to the local market and/or the anchor tenant of East Link Center. And then with over 250 patrons, each year, East Link Center contributes approximately $25 million in direct economic activity. Charlestown obviously is a vibrant event city. Business growth and attraction is paramount for us, especially new, new business. Our investment that we're recommending in the event hosting grants for the, the current fiscal is hosting fees, of which we have two at $60,000. Core signature events at $111,500, and then signature events, 267,000, for a total of 439,000. You can see the breakdown by percentages in the chart that's provided. Event hosting grants requested for this fiscal totals $565,500. The total event attraction budget decreased by $80,600 over the last fiscal, most of that attributed to hosting grants. As you know, it has an accordion effect, elasticity, too, it comes up and down. Fees and membership grants for '25, '26 totaled $262,000 and are tied to agreements with Charlestown Civic Center Management, Inc., and the Charlestown Islanders Hockey Club. Strategic alignment falls to several areas. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail, but the city's strategic plan, the pillar of inclusive economic growth amongst others, the draft official plan, sport tourism framework, and the Charlestown festivals and events approach to growth, all which have been endorsed by council. And external partner strategies align, obviously, with tourism, P I's growing tourism together, as well as Discover Charlestown's revealing the true spirit of the, the destination. And finally, with this section, criterion decision-making process for recommended approval is, falls into a few buckets, I'm going to highlight three of them. The initial review by core staff, the criteria that we use is funding agreement, is there a funding agreement in place, strategic alignment, economic tourism and social-cultural impacts, public access, paid or free event, feasibility is demonstrated for city funding and the ability to leverage other funding, and previous final grant report. ability to leverage other funding, and previous final grant reports and fiscal position to the organization. Bucket number four, you'll note, committee review endorsement. We have been to our committee on two occasions with our, with our full inventory of grants, so the committee is quite familiar with those, and have endorsed those to come here to, to the council table. And then finally, the grantee reporting includes things such as estimated attendance, economic and tourism-cultural impacts, financial statements, including revenue and expenses, and then some images, which we use for marketing purposes internally. So that's a quick overview of event hosting and membership. If there's any questions with this area, I'll address them now before I move on to culture.
Good. Okay. Yes, just one second, Deputy Mayor, go right ahead.
This might be a good time to recess, because the planning and heritage department is gonna need 15 minutes to switch over to the public meeting that begins at seven. So instead of Wayne being in the middle of a report, I would suggest that we recess now.
Could we wrap up?
Yeah, just, just, could we just wrap up? Because Wayne, do you have these memberships and grants? Is that you?
That's what I just presented, Your Worship.
Okay, so we're going to the next page, which would be arts and culture, and that's Laurel?
No, I have the file here as well.
You're all right to go ahead with it and give us these sort of calls notes?
Yeah, if Tracy can flip it over.
Thank you.
So thank you, Your Worship, move right into, to cultural grants. It's important to note that in 2011, Charlotte Town was designated as a cultural capital of Canada, something that we're pretty proud of, and something that still is, has a lot of afterglow for us, and it also lends well to the advancements that we've taken with council support to advance the cultural file as a whole. Arts and culture grants support organizations, groups, or individuals that maximize the economic and social impacts of the arts, and this comes directly from the city's grants bylaw, along with public arts grant and core partner of the city's cultural file. Grants are often a key component of municipal culture development across the country, you would see that trend if you did a bit of research. There's three categories or buckets that form this particular area. Signed agreements, examples would be Confederation Center of the Arts, the Guild, and the PEI Library, all of which are key economic drivers, and are right here in the heart of the city. Core arts organizations such as the PI Symphony, the Open, This Town is Small, and Music PEI. All Charlotte Town-centered organizations who operate year-round and offer events and services. And thirdly, the cultural events, examples would be the Charlotte Town Zine Fest, the Community Theater, Island Fringe Fest, all which are multi-day events here in Charlotte Town. Both the core arts organizations and cultural events have elevated as a result of council identifying culture as a priority. Value generated, obviously, culture is a major economic engine driving prosperity to accommodations and restaurants and retail, vibrancy and well-being within our community, at least 600 artists paid, and in at least $295,000, sorry, 295,000 attendees at initiatives supported by the city's arts and culture grants in '24, '25. PEI's cultural GDP is $206.6 million, with 110 million of that happening right here in the capital city, with $73 billion to the national cultural GDP. I'd also highlight the fact that 931 full-time cultural jobs exist here in Charlotte Town. Culture's a cornerstone and a vibrant community for us. Culture enhances the quality of life and civic pride and makes Charlotte Town a desired place to live, work, and play, raise a family. It fosters inclusion, diversity, connection, and shared identity, enhancing year-round opportunities for residents and visitors. City cultural grants multiply the impact, grants, grant recipients leverage municipal funding to secure other government and private funding. An example of this would be Zine Fest, the municipality invested $2,500, and they leveraged that funding and turned it into $60,000 through a federal grant. Grants enable external groups to deliver world-class programming, reduce operational budgets, increasing city staff capacity, and creating jobs. Other municipalities are often operating or staffing their own cultural facilities and venues, and the way that we operate with external grants allows us to save dollars while advancing the cultural file. Value generated comes in a variety of ways as well. Measurement impacts are standard, and there's a number of ways to do that, but it's important to note that it is extremely difficult to quantify the total community impact, and I think these pictures speak volumes and offer a lot of things to consider with respect to the cultural impacts. Our investment in arts and culture, recommended arts and culture grants for this fiscal, signed agreements, there's three, $477,369. Core art organizations, $789,000. Cultural events, $839,500. You see the percentages there with the pie chart as well. Cultural grants request for 25, 26, totaled $774,815. And the total arts and culture budget increased by $56 over last fiscal. Strategic alignment, in many ways, is similar to my previous presentation, but it includes the strategic plan, the official draft plan, the cultural policy, which Doug has put a lot of work into this and has been supported by council in helping us to move the cultural file forward. Culture priority has been identified as one of council's top priorities in '25, '26 financial plan, and provincial plans aligns with PI Cultural Action Plan and growing tourism together in the strategy. The community is very excited about the efforts that we've made as a municipality, thanks in large part to council, and I think based on these strategies and plans and policies, council's provided staff with a clear mandate to advance these files as core cultural institutions increase across the municipality. And then finally, criterion decision-making program, again, similar to my previous presentation, I'll draw your attention to three buckets. Initial review by core staff, similar to the previous one, I'm not gonna go through all of them all again, but they're, they're here for your viewing. These grants were to our committee twice and supported, and then finally, reporting includes all of the items listed in box, in the file box on the, on the page.
Mr. Wayne Long, thank you very much. There was a Wayne Long elected in St. John, again, third term, fourth term? Good liberal. Any questions? Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that it's clear now, when you go through this, that you, that all these have come through the committees, and then they've come to finance. And they were all, you know, they're, they're asked to stay within or reduce, but it's clear from every person that comes up, you can see that it's gone through the committee, gone through finance, before it went to council. It's the community ones that we need to deal with. So, and I know we're gonna be running out of time here pretty soon, so. And that's why I was saying earlier, these, we can do these anytime, because these have already improved in the budget, so if there's a discussion we want to have anytime on these, we can. But anyway, thank you.
Counsel Twill?
Well, I appreciate that, Counsel Bernard, but by the same token, you know, we were given a sheet back March 24th, whether capital, whether operational, pretty good, pretty good line items that were, were eliminated from, from the budget. And we asked our staff, take a cut. And we did take a cut, each department took a cut, and yet at the same time, $70 million, or, I'm sorry, $7 million, or ask, you know, for $8 million, and all this kind of stuff. And I mean, we've gotta be a lot more frugal with our money, or the taxpayers' money, and, and there's a lot of different organizations that are out there, and I don't know, okay, they come to the city, and then are they getting money from the province, or are they getting money from other agencies? You know, we, we have to know what the financial statements are, we have to know what the criteria is, because there's only one taxpayer. And I'm very interested, I mean, these are great programs, and it's great, it's, it's great to showcase a city from a number of different perspectives during the four seasons, but at the same time, we've gotta deliver our core services, and we gotta do infrastructure renewal.
Okay. So, I know, can we, we have to, deputy, we have to organize for a meeting, so we're gonna take a recess, and we'll have the public meeting, and?
What is left?
Just the grants.
No, Andy? Run the resume?
No, no, I know, but the, on this package, that's what he was asking about, is the grants.
Did the committee?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be an act of that?
Okay, so can we, can we just take a recess, and then, what does Jason, or, who is it?
Recession.
No, recess, we're coming back.
With?
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, wait, he, he says after the planning meeting.
After the planning meeting. Yeah. I don't think anybody else has to stay here, I think, Dan, are we all right? No, Josh is done? Frank, Wayne, Laurel, do you have to stay? No? No, Wayne's done. Oh, Wayne might have to be?
I have a question.
Okay.
I can ask him after, can you go recess?
Ask him during recess, or have one of them public?
No, I have some, what's, what's our recess?
Yeah, we're, just shut her down. Yeah. Okay. So we're, we're gonna get set up, guys, we'll just see how long this takes. Please, thank you.